Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which this stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Role, Graham Cassoon.
Here.
Tobin.
Here.
Kleiner.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
John Francois. Zabson.
Burr.
Here.
Green.
Here.
Massey.
Here.
President Rodriguez.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Okay, for the good of the city, I would like to invite the mayor and the chief up.
Good evening. So before I begin this evening, I'd like to thank Meredith Stefano, the common counsel, and the police commission for providing me with this opportunity to publicly recognize three members of the Middletown Police Department for their recent promotions and to acknowledge the outstanding bravery and courage exhibited by police officer Evan Barone during a critical incident that took place in August of 2020. I would also like to thank the family members, friends, city residents, and the members of the Middletown Police Department who have joined us either in person or remotely this evening to celebrate the accomplishments of these four members. At the conclusion of my remarks, I will officially pin each of the officers, but first I would like to provide a brief overview of their officer and their service for our organization. Lieutenant Evan Cologne. Lieutenant Cologne began his career with Middletown Police Department on September 4th, 2007. He has a bachelor's degree in criminal justice from the University of Delaware. Early within his career, Lieutenant Cologne was recognized as being one of the future leaders of the Middletown Police Department due to his professionalism, commitment to service, and his ability to constantly perform his duties with the departmental goals and objectives in mind. As patrol officer, Lieutenant Cologne was extremely active and constantly ranked as one of the agency's top performers, which led to various special assignments and duties, including his assignment to the department's crime suppression team, which consisted of a group of highly motivated police officers tasked with addressing various types of street crimes and quality of life issues. Lieutenant Cologne became a certified police instructor, developing detailed lesson plans and presentations to aid in the instruction of police officers on critically important topics such as legal updates, the use of deadly physical force, and stop and frisk procedures. Lieutenant Cologne became a field training officer where he trained and supervised newly appointed police officers, which afforded him the opportunity to impart his experiences, proactive work style, and proactive work style to the newest members of our department. He was selected for this role and hoped that he would use his experiences to train and emulate his work performance in the new officers he was training. Lieutenant Cologne also became a certified crisis and hostage negotiator, which tasked him with establishing communications with high-risk individuals such as barricaded or suicidal subjects in an effort to achieve peaceful resolutions to these potentially life-threatening situations. In June of 2015, Lieutenant Cologne was promoted to the rank of detective and was assigned to the department's investigative division, where he joined the ranks of some of the most talented and dedicated criminal investigators within our region. As a detective, Lieutenant Cologne continued to demonstrate his dedication and commitment to the city of Middletown, investigating serious crimes and conducting countless interviews of victims and witnesses. This position required him to work closely, not only with the various units of Middletown Police Department, but also with our fellow law enforcement partners on the local, state, and federal levels. In August of 2017, Lieutenant Cologne was promoted to the rank of sergeant and was assigned back to the patrol division. In this very important role, he provided direct supervision over the field operations of a patrol squad, where he was responsible to ensure that the patrol officers served this community with professionalism and within the guidelines of our department policy and procedure. Throughout his tenure, Lieutenant Cologne has been honored with numerous awards and commendations for his excellence in police work, and he has proven time and time again his outstanding dedication to the city of Middletown Police Department. I'm honored to recognize his promotion to the rank of lieutenant, as he is now one of the top-ranking members of the Middletown Police Department. Congratulations. Sergeant Richard Regina. Sergeant Regina began his career at Middletown Police Department on September 10th, 2012. He has a bachelor's degree in human resources from Mount St. Mary College. As a patrol officer, Sergeant Regina was extremely active, constantly being one of the department's top performers in regards to arrests and traffic summons. He was also known for his sincere interest in addressing quality of life issues and addressing the root cause of community problems. Sergeant Regina's proactive patrol style and great communication skills ultimately led him to his assignment as one of the department's neighborhood enhancement officers. He accepted this responsibility in November of 2016 and quickly demonstrated his unique ability to listen to residents' issues and work collectively with them and our community partners to resolve the issues. As a neighborhood enhancement officer, Sergeant Regina was tasked with addressing quality of life and nuisance issues throughout the city. And in doing so, he not only creatively utilized resources from within Middletown Police Department, but he also established partnerships with the city's code enforcement department, the schools, and various other local organizations. This multifaceted approach provided a foundation for reinventing the manner in which our agency addressed neighborhood complaints. In this role, Sergeant Regina built lasting relationships and quickly became known throughout the city as one of the go-to officers for assistance in resolving and solving difficult problems. In addition to his role as neighborhood enhancement officer, Sergeant Regina also wore several other hats, to include being a field training officer. He trained and supervised newly appointed police officers, imparting his knowledge and experience to include how to effectively build a stronger bond with the community. Sergeant Regina is also a certified police instructor and is one of the department's lead instructors for CPR and AED, as well as other lifesaving medical procedures, given his strong medical background as a paramedic prior to becoming a police officer. Sergeant Regina is also a certified bicycle officer and child passenger safety seat technician. As a bicycle officer, Sergeant Regina utilized the bicycle as a means to further enhance his community and youth engagement during his patrols throughout the city, and especially in the newly created reservoir trail system. As a child passenger safety seat technician, Sergeant Regina educated and assisted parents with acquisition and installation of car seats, ensuring that parents had the correct style and size car seat needed to correctly fit their child so as to afford a safe and comfortable car ride. This was probably very helpful for him, as he and his wife just welcomed their second child three weeks ago. Throughout his tenure with our organization, Sergeant Regina has been honored with numerous awards and commendations for excellence in police work, to include being recognized as the department leader and the issuance of traffic summons for several years. He's also the recipient of five lifesaving awards. Sergeant Regina continues to demonstrate his professionalism and commitment to the Middletown Police Department, and I'm honored to have him serving in his new role as a patrol sergeant. I'm confident he will draw on his extensive knowledge and experience to guide the members of his squad and ensure that they continue to provide the highest level of professionalism and service to the city of Middletown. Congratulations. Detective Andrew Rosen. Detective Rosen began his career with Middletown Police Department on March 3rd, 2008. He has an associate's degree in social science from Middletown's own SUNY Orange. Like his two colleagues who stand beside him, Detective Rosen has always been a very active and committed member of the department, who has constantly endeavored to provide the residents of this great city a police service that is second to none. One of the many highlights of Detective Rosen's career was his four-plus-year assignment to the narcotics unit, where he worked diligently investigating high-level narcotics-related offenses. In this role, Detective Rosen worked hand-in-hand with our various law enforcement partners on the local, state, and federal level, bringing countless narcotics operatives to justice and removing dangerous drugs and weapons from our streets. While assigned to the narcotics unit, Detective Rosen was instrumental in the gang and narcotics investigation that led to the arrest and conviction of the four persons responsible for the murder of Corey White. During his career, Detective Rosen was tasked with several other important responsibilities to which he was fully committed. These responsibilities included being a field training officer, where he trained and supervised newly appointed police officers. He is also a certified police instructor, as well as a firearms and less-lethal impact munitions instructor. In these two very important roles, Detective Rosen is responsible for training the members of our department in the safe and proper handling of firearms and less-lethal weapons, as well as achieving proficiency under varying high-stress conditions. Detective Rosen also spent some time in the department's neighborhood enhancement unit, where he worked collectively to address nuisance and quality of life issues. Detective Rosen's most recent assignment, however, was the very challenging position of school resource officer in the Middletown High School. In this role, Detective Rosen was tasked with helping to create a safer environment for the staff and students at the high school, but more importantly, he had to work as an educator and the department liaison, working to develop trust between the students and the police department. His commitment, compassion, and outstanding communication skills allowed him to excel on this position. Detective Rosen served as a role model for students and was able to connect with and build lasting relationships with many people, inspiring them to do their very best. He became the conduit for information between the school, the police department, the community, and various local organizations and services. He will definitely be missed in this role. Detective Rosen was honored with several awards and commendations for his work as a police officer, to include a lifesaving award. Throughout his career, he has demonstrated time and again his professionalism and commitment to the Middletown Police Department, always going above and beyond what was expected of him. I'm honored to recognize his promotion to the position of detective, where he will work hand-in-hand with an elite group of dedicated criminal investigators to bring closure to criminal cases. Congratulations. Now we're going to come forward to conduct the actual pinning ceremony of the newly promoted members. Applause. Just a few more words, I'll let you get back to sit with your families. Lieutenant Cologne, Sergeant Regina, and Detective Rosen, your dedication and commitment to the Middletown Police Department is inspiring and so greatly appreciated. I know that each of you have put in countless hours studying and working hard to achieve these promotions. I commend you for your efforts and your dedication to this community. Without a doubt, each of you will be faced with new challenges as you embark upon this next chapter within your careers. In today's environment, we are all seeing that policing is undergoing significant change and reform, but you have my promise that I will support and assist you every step of the way, as will the other dedicated men and women of this organization. I encourage you to stay true to yourselves and true to the strong morals and ethics that have led you to your new positions. I ask that you always remember the oath that you took and which you swore to protect and serve the people of this community. I also ask that you always remember why you became a police officer. As you enter into the new roles, I implore you to strive for excellence in everything that you do, and also from the people you serve with, so that you could continue to work diligently towards achieving the goals and objectives of our organization, and ensuring the safety and security of this great city. Lastly, I ask that you embrace the words of Lieutenant General David Morrison, "The standard you walk by is the standard you accept." And please, maintain the integrity of our organization that has existed for the past 133 years. Congratulations. Officer Barone, you kind of join me? Officer Evan Barone, thank you for coming this evening. Officer Barone began his career with the Middletown Police Department on October 16th, 2017, at 23 years old. Besides playing football, there is nothing Officer Barone wanted to do more than become a police officer, and even more so, a city Middletown police officer, where he could serve the community that he was born and raised in. On August 14th, 2018, after completing the police academy and his field training, Officer Barone hit the streets, ready to take on the challenges of policing. With his great demeanor, his joyous personality, and his huge smile guiding him on his way, helping people came natural to Officer Barone, and he excelled in his position, leading to his assignment within the neighborhood enhancement unit in December of 2019. In this assignment, he worked diligently, building trust throughout the community, while working to resolve the root causes of neighborhood issues. Officer Barone embraced this assignment, which is clearly evident by the following statement that he wrote on his evaluation in February of 2020, quote, "I love coming to work every day for an organization as great as the city of Middletown Police Department. I am thankful for every and all opportunities that should come my way. I would like to continue helping my hometown community on the more personal level that I am awarded via the neighborhood enhancement unit," end of quote. It's obvious that serving his hometown is very rewarding to Officer Barone, and he did it every day with honor. Then came Saturday, August 29th, 2020. This day started off like any other day for Officer Barone. He headed out of headquarters, smiling ear to ear, ready to patrol his assigned neighborhoods. Unfortunately, we all know now, this day ended up being anything but close to ordinary. In fact, this day ended up being the day that changed Officer Barone's life forever. At approximately 7:42 PM, as Officer Barone was driving up Myrtle Avenue, he was flagged down by a female in front of 28 Myrtle Avenue for an unknown problem. Officer Barone pulled over to the side of the road and exited his patrol vehicle to speak with the female. The female advised Officer Barone that her ex-boyfriend had arrived at their residence, uninvited, and was refusing to leave. She further went on to state that he was armed with a gun. Just as the female was explaining the situation to Officer Barone, the unwanted male subject burst out of the residence onto the front porch with a handgun and fired without warning, striking Officer Barone in the left forearm. Without hesitation, Officer Barone immediately returned fire, striking the male subject in the lower extremities and the head. In a fraction of a second, Officer Barone's entire world was flipped upside down. Not only was he just involved in a near-death experience in which he was wounded, he also had multiple people all around him yelling and screaming. Officer Barone knew that he had to maintain control of this chaos in order to not only protect himself, but also to protect the numerous adults and children that were all around him at 28 Myrtle Avenue, as the suspect was still an active threat in possession of a firearm. Officer Barone did just that. He took a few steps back, called for assistance, assessed himself, and like a true warrior, he took control of the chaos, ensuring the safety of all. With the assistance of his fellow officers, the scene was quickly secured. But I want to take a minute to put this incident into perspective. This entire incident, from the moment that Officer Barone exited his patrol car until the time that his backup arrived, was approximately two minutes. Most likely the longest two minutes of Officer Barone's life. But even more noteworthy is that it was actually less than 20 seconds from the time that Officer Barone exited his patrol car until the moment he was engaged in a gunfight, the fight for his life. So when you break it down even further, Officer Barone had only moments to comprehend the fact that who he was being shot at and to react. This is the tragic and unfortunate reality of policing. Officers have to make life-changing decisions in fractions of seconds while under extreme stress. Most of the time in these high-stress, rapidly involving situations, the involved officers do not have the benefit to discuss or explore their options. They don't have the luxury to call a timeout and review camera footage. They must simply react in a manner that not only protects themselves, but also to protect others, and that is exactly what Officer Barone did on August 29th, 2020. We are all very fortunate that Officer Barone has amazing instincts, that he utilized his training and experience, and that he reacted as he did, because if not, the results of this incident could have been very different. Let's face it, defendant in this case, Deshaun Owens, who had an extensive violent criminal history, came to Middletown on August 29th, 2020, unannounced and armed with a handgun. And I think it's safe to say, he didn't come here with good intentions. It is for the selfless, heroic lifesaving actions Officer Barone demonstrated on August 29th, 2020, that he is being recognized and awarded for this evening. Officer Barone, it is with great honor, I present you with the Medal of Valor, which is awarded to department members for conspicuous gallantry while acting in the line of duty. This award is presented to officers for acts of exceptional bravery performed at a very high risk to their own lives with full awareness of the danger involved. It is also with great honor that I present you with the law enforcement Purple Heart Award, which is issued to law enforcement officers who are injured, are wounded, or killed in the line of duty. If I could have everyone stand. Go back and let me just have everybody salute me, or salute him with me, if you don't mind joining me. I think he's definitely earned it and deserves it. At this time, I would once again like to thank everyone that came out this evening. And I'd like to once again congratulate Lieutenant Evan Cologne, Sergeant Richard Regina, Detective Andrew Rosen on their achievements. Congratulations again, gentlemen. I would also like to once again thank Officer Evan Barone for his bravery and extreme sacrifices he made in service to the city of Middletown and the city of Middletown Police Department. Thank you once again, Evan.
I have my vote mask on because today is the, you only have a little bit more time to vote on the Board of Education vote, so please go out and vote. But more importantly, on behalf of myself as mayor and also chairman of the City of Middletown Police Commission and the common council and our residents, I want to acknowledge the bravery, the courage, and the commitment of Evan, his wife and family. And, you know, I've known Sam since we were kids at Albert Street Playground, and the trauma that they went through, the family, also has to be recognized. And I think Evan's reactions are an indication of good upbringing, too. And also the investment that we make as a body, as a common council, into training, into decisions that we make as a body that the chief acknowledged, we look at it as an investment. And that investment reaps us the professionalism and the courage of a professional police department here in the city of Middletown that has the support of our community and has the support of the common council and has the support of the police commission, and do also acknowledge the great professionalism of the chief and his management staff. So congratulations to all. Congratulations, Evan, on a well-deserved honor. And we are 100% behind you, and I want to thank you and your families for all your commitment to our community. Thank you.
That concludes our presentation this evening. I'd like to thank the council for allowing me to publicly recognize the members of the department for their amazing accomplishments and for Officer Barone's heroic behavior and performance. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. At this time, we'll take a short 10-minute break. Agenda number three, approval minutes.
Okay, tonight, we have three council meeting minutes, February 9th, February 16th, and March 2nd of 2021.
We have a motion to approve all of them, Massey, and second by Oldman Green. All in favor?
Aye.
Correspondents?
Nothing is evening.
For the good of the city, anyone who would like to address the council, please step forward. Anyone online?
Not at this time.
Thank you. Remarks of the mayor.
We'll keep it short. The garbage can distribution is still continuing. The bid district portion is on hold for now because of such a large demand, plus we didn't buy enough of the smaller cans that we had to order more. So we're looking to figure out what we're going to do for now in the interim in the bid district. But the rest of the city, we're going to be, once passed, I think it's on the agenda tonight for passage, we will be putting together the brochure that will be delivered and either mailed, it'll be online, and we will be trying to deliver to, quote, "problem properties" or people who are not following the rules, to have it explained exactly what the program is. We ask people to go online now and read what the resolution states, or you can wait for the brochure, but you need to put the lids on. You can't use it for yard waste. You should have an idea by now whether the one large can is going to be sufficient. If not, you can order a second can. I paid my $100 last week. The next day, I had a second can in my yard, and it would be $100 additional per year. So recycling is up. The only complaint I've heard is that cardboard takes up a lot, but we're talking about breaking down the cardboard and, you know, not just putting a box into the can, but for the most part, the feedback from the community is very positive. They feel it's keeping the neighborhoods cleaner, less animals going through the trash, and no cans blowing around, and just the overall appearance has been very positive. Other than that, CDA program, we sold another house at the corner of Beatty and Wickham. It's working well. Four more properties went into the CDA. Upon discussions with Maria Bruni, Economic Development Director, we're looking at possibly the funding, a CDA, some more of these homes using the ARPA money also. So that might be a proposal to you folks, as we come down with all of the money that needs to be spent over the next two years. So in regards to the ONW station, we did get a report from our engineer. We're putting that together. We're meeting with Head Start, the ABCD Head Start, as a potential tenant. I think it's doable. We're going to present the numbers to you folks within a couple of weeks, once we get all our answers from the different elected officials that we're seeking funding from. But we think it's a very doable project, and that's probably the most impactful project, from my perspective, that we can have in the ARPA monies. Other than that, I have nothing further. Other than that, I have nothing further. You have any questions? I'd be more than happy to address them.
Alderman Kleiner?
Just very quickly, we request for an update on the Heritage Trail. Is there any new information?
Meeting was canceled again. They keep canceling the meetings. Jacob did, though, have a conversation with Mr. Sorenson, the Newt County Planner. He's been there a few months now, and he did tell us, or told Jacob, that all of the funding is in place, it's going to happen, it's just a matter of us sitting down with them to see that final plan. As you know, they modified it where they're going to have two branches coming through downtown. That's what they were looking at the last time we met, but the last two meetings have been postponed for, I don't know for what reasons, but I think personal reasons on their side, not on our side, but we are pushing it. We want this thing to go out to bid this year, and we can't do so until we agree on the passageway through downtown. By the way, we will also be fencing in the, with decorative fence, the skateboard park. We had our insurance agent review it also. We were getting complaints of people flying off the skate park down onto the sidewalk and into the road, and it created somewhat of a hazardous condition. Maria had money in her community development budget, economic development line, so we will be doing a nice decorative fence around three-quarters of the facility so that people can't end up landing on the sidewalk, or going out into the road onto Union Street and onto Depot Street. So you might be seeing that go out. We did a purchase order for it. It's federal money, it's not city money, but we did so after consultation with Greg Towns from Marshall and Sterling, and he agreed with our analysis that we should do something there. But it'll look nice. It's a nice decorative black fence.
Anyone else for the mayor? Thank you, Mayor.
All right, thank you.
Reports of department heads, economic development.
Good evening. Just a couple items. This Friday, we have a ribbon cutting at 7th South Street. Touchdown sports cards opened up a few weeks ago, so we're going to have a ribbon cutting, and it's behalf of the city and the Business Improvement District, so 3:30 PM. See you for the ribbon cutting there. Also, June 5th, the farmer's market will begin. We're going to be at our new location, but we're going to utilize Union Street until the areaway park is fully completed. We're waiting for sod irrigation, and then I believe the pavilion is on its way to go up, so we're going to utilize Union Street until that's ready to go. It'll be a nice transition, and you'll see it on the agenda tonight to close Union Street on Saturdays beginning June 5th. I believe we asked up until August, just to give us a little time. So we're looking forward. I know the bid in our department, along with Stephanie, Eileen, and Joseph, have been working really hard to make this move and get the farmers online, and you know, transition to the new location, and of course, follow COVID rules and stuff that we have to still abide by. And that's all I have for tonight.
Any question for Maria? Thank you, Maria. DPW Commissioner?
So we'll start off, you have a couple of resolutions from DPW before you. One of them is 10-acre subdivision for a property right adjacent to our water treatment plant. And like we talked about, we discussed it the last time, it's going to be purchased, hopefully for $200,000, subject to appraisal, agreeing with that number, and it's going to be just there for the future. Whenever the city of Middletown decides to expand their water treatment plant, their water treatment system, new technology, new requirement, new whatever, they'll be ready, they'll have property for them to expand, rather than being constrained like they are right now. So we urge your support. So the engineer will be doing the lot subdivision in there, and to create the 10-acre lot for us for the water treatment plant, will be merged into a water treatment plant. That is one of the items. The other item is the reservoirs. Alderman Massey, we're 100% capacity, they're all topped off, we're in very good shape. I wish we had more volume to store, but we're good with that. And yesterday, we started our first algae treatment, which is using copper sulfate throughout our reservoirs, and that was concluded yesterday. So that's the first treatment. Just to be as a preventative maintenance, we hit very low dosage of copper sulfate in there to control the algae, so it doesn't become a problem. And we keep an eye on it, we monitor it. On a weekly basis, we monitor dissolved oxygen, pH, and different parameters in there on a weekly basis, so we will not be blindsided, because many times in the past, the city did hit, was hit with algae blooms, which caused it to lose some of its reservoirs. So hopefully, we're being proactive. We've been very successful with that technique the last few years, so hopefully, it will not happen again, and we'll be on top of it. Tomorrow night, as you know, we have the finished water mains, and they are starting from the water treatment plant down to Manhattan Avenue, and they are under construction at this time. And tomorrow night, we're going to be doing a critical switch-over, actually tie-in, not a switch-over yet, tie-in of the new pipes into the existing pipes at the water treatment plant. For that, we have to have a shutdown on the high-pressure system. That will take place tomorrow night, 11 o'clock, until 3 o'clock. That is a shutdown. We don't anticipate to have any water shortages in there, because there's very minimal demand at the time for the high-pressure system, about 900 gallons per minute. We have water storage tanks available, and then we have the County Route 78, the back feed into the system, available for us. So we don't expect any issues, but the fire department has been advised, the health department has been advised, because that's a major step. I will be there tomorrow night throughout the process until the tie-in is completed and line is flushed. And so we're in good shape. We did send a NEXEL this morning to everybody. We'll send another NEXEL tomorrow morning and towards the end of the day. Again, we don't expect anything to happen, but who knows? You know, it's a tie-in, things could happen, things could go bad. We will be topping off all of our water storage tanks throughout the system in preparation just in case. We're preparing for the milling and paving. The mayor has the final list of streets, and he'll be distributing that to you guys. And we will be starting the milling this coming Monday. So you know, you're going to find some traffic issues in there. We'll try our best to accommodate everybody, but please bear with us, because we're doing a tremendous amount of milling and paving this year, among everything else that is taking place. So bear with us, and just plan accordingly, and be careful when you're driving on the rough roads, and we'll try to make, do our best to make it as smooth as possible, but please be careful, be on the lookout for manholes. There's going to be cones, barrels in the middle of the road in there to identify manholes, covers, and valves, and so on and so forth, because some of them are going to stick out a little bit. So just be careful. Sometimes the barrels are blown away, so just be mindful of it, please, and keep your eyes open, and we appreciate that very much, all your cooperation. The other thing is, the DEC, today, they concluded drilling of wells, monitoring wells, at a site which is what we call Miami'sburg, or the Magnolia Park. Basically, it's East Main Street and Anthony Street in there, and it is the old, reputedly, the old landfill for coal ash. So the DEC is doing that on their own, it has nothing to do with us, it has nothing to do that there is pollution, or there is any issue like that, but they'll be monitoring the groundwater table in there, which is obviously, none of us, city of Middletown or town of Walco, we use that area or that aquifer. But that's their job, they're going to be monitoring it, and hopefully, everything will be okay. They'll be doing some sampling, and so on. New York Rising in there, you know that we signed two contracts in there, where RJ Cruise and Boyce Excavation for two different sites, West Main and Grand Street, which is Draper Brook, to replace the culverts, underground culverts slash bridges. And tomorrow, we're going to have onsite conference in there, construction conference, with Orange and Rockland regarding gas, electric, and cable, and the contractors to make sure, because many of the poles, they have to be relocated in there, because we have to drive sheet piles, and so on and so forth. So we've been preparing for this, and so we'll have our meeting tomorrow at the site. That will be our second meeting for it. Some of you may remember that with, the mayor and I have been meeting with DEC several times in the past about our water withdrawal permits in there. The DEC, they have a new system in there that they have to, before, we had individual permits, maybe five of them, to withdraw water from different places. Now they combined everything in one play, in one permit, and so we're working with them right now with the draft permit, and so you would know, hopefully, we'll get it resolved in a very good way for the city of Middletown, and we should not have any issue with it. But we have some comments about the draft, and hopefully, the DEC will accommodate our request. Davish Park expansion in there, we're still almost wrestling with the, you know, to try to get this job up and running, and every time we think we plugged one thing, another thing's open up. And today, I have sent a letter out, and I copied the council president and the mayor, and I copied, I sent it to John, so John will be sending it to all the council members in there, basically going through all the steps that were taken, and where we are. So the mayor and I are trying our best, I'm trying my best in there to get this job going, and to make a job out of it, but I'm extremely frustrated, but we will see what happens. I'll just keep, we'll keep slogging, and we'll get it, we'll get it, we'll get it going at some point. With that, do you have any questions for me? Oh, the grass. The grass, please reminder, we sent out 414 letters for the residents in there, the high grass. Many of you guys complied, and we appreciate it very much, and we thank you for it. We started cutting private lots, and we built up to $2,500 so far. So please, when you get our letter, consider it as a reminder, it will count against you. The second reminder is going to be two days, and then we'll start cutting. So please help us out, keep the properties clean and cut, and we appreciate that very much, and we thank the people who responded to us positively so far. Any questions for me?
Any question for Jacob? Thank you. Thank you, Jacob.
Thank you.
Fire chief?
I don't have much to say. Y'all have third alarm fire last night, minor injuries. Everybody was lucky last night in that condo complex. Any questions?
Any question for a fire chief? Alderman Massey?
Chief, it's not a question, but I know on behalf of everyone here, thank you and your entire department. You saved a lot of lives last night.
Oh, thank you. PD was there, they did a great job. It was lucky you came in around that time and not at 1:00 AM.
That ladder truck saved a lot of buildings, too.
The two people up there?
Yes.
Thank you.
Just for the record. Police chief?
Good evening, once again. I do have a few things just to address this evening. As the weather warms, we're starting to deal with fireworks calls, and as we move into the 4th of July, you know, weekend is not that far away in reality, but I just want to remind the residents and everyone else that's listening, that fireworks are not legal here in the city of Middletown. No form or fashion, even though you could buy them at Walmart and other stores and shop right in and around the area, they are legal in other municipalities. However, as the council knows, they opted out of the fireworks law a couple of years ago. We are putting in place a plan for more enforcement this year to try to address it prior to that We will be participating on May 26th with the school and a career expo. It's a virtual career expo. I know when we did our police panels several months ago, that was one of the topics that came up, is how are we reaching out to the members of the community to entice members of the community to take the police test and join the force? So on May 26th, I have officers assigned to participate in the career expo. Again, it is a virtual, it is being hosted by the Middletown School District, and they invited us to participate in it. This coming weekend, the 22nd, Officer Scott Gallagher, he's our downtown officer, he's coordinated along with the bid district, a downtown cleanup on a smaller scale than what we traditionally have done in the past of the citywide cleanup. He's organized with a couple of organizations, local organizations, to do a few hours in the downtown to get the streets cleaned up. And just in case anybody doesn't know, or just for information, he did a similar project in collaboration with the bid district and some of the businesses about a month ago in cleaning up graffiti, where they acquired the paint, went around on an early Saturday morning and addressed some of the graffiti on the building. So kudos to Officer Gallagher and the bid district for working to clean up the downtown. The information cards that I provided the council earlier, I do have additional ones. We had several printed, and we could have more printed as needed. And basically, it's, the goal, it actually came as an idea from Alderman Johnson and the mayor, is to get information out about NICSOL, get it out to our communities as you engage with people in the community. Just a quick card to hand out that has the NICSOL information, as well as some other pertinent telephone numbers. Just to piggyback on what Fire Chief said, the Buttonwood Fire. It was horrific last night, and as he said, everybody did an amazing job. I'd like to thank him and his staff, my staff, all the support services that came out. Really a horrific scene. You know, to me, it's one of the worst things you can do is lose your home. That's everything that you have, and unfortunately, we have 16 families that did lose their home as a result of that. On a more positive note, Sergeant Welch worked with Buttonwood Organization today, and some of the other support services, to get some information about the families that lost their homes, and she's putting together a list of needs. And we'll be pushing it out through social media and on our website, and we're going to make our jab building the drop-off point. So once we get that out, if anybody's willing to donate, I'm sure the families will definitely appreciate that. I did speak with Alderman Kleiner in regards to the department's stats. I know he was posed with a question in regards to stats. I just want to let everybody know, I'm always more than willing to discuss our stats. I typically don't address them in the council meeting, because I do address them in my monthly Police Commission meeting, which is televised. It is the third Thursday of every month, right here in this chambers. We do televise them, we do talk about police operations a little more in-depth than I do here at the council meetings. However, I'm always open to discuss them, and additionally, we post our monthly stats on our website. So for anybody that is interested, it's a quick link on the right side of our website, and I know it's up to date up through April right now. But again, if anybody ever has any questions, I normally have them with me, or I'm available most times to discuss them. Last couple things, the promotions. I appreciate that you gave me the opportunity to recognize those officers on their accomplishments. They truly work very hard to achieve those promotions, and to come here in front of their family, in front of the community, it is, it's very important to them. So thank you for that. Same with Officer Barone, well deserved. I appreciate the support in that, and I'd like to wish him, and hopefully, everybody wishes him, you know, a speedy recovery. He still has a long way to go, but he's really made a lot of strides, and it was great to see him in here this evening. Other than that, I have nothing unless you have questions for me.
Any question for the police chief? Thank you, chief. Corporation counsel?
I don't have anything to report unless anybody's got any questions for me.
Any question for Alex? Thank you, Alex. City clerk?
I have nothing this evening.
Any question for John? All right. Remarks of Alderman, Alderman Massey?
I really don't have anything other than, everyone's going to say the same thing. We're very proud of the officers that were promoted, and we're certainly very proud of Evan, and to thank everyone in the community for their involvement.
Alderman Tobin?
Must have read my mind. All right. Congratulations to Officers Cologne, Regina, Rosen, and Barone. Thank you. Can't thank you enough. A big thank you to the firefighters and the police department for their heroic work at the Buttonwood condos. Prayers go out to the families, our constituents. Prayers go out to the families, our constituents, the 16 families that lost their homes, and to the victim, all victims of domestic violence. It's a horrible crime, I can't imagine what it's like to lose your home. And that's it for me.
Alderman Green?
Thank you, all. I'll echo the congratulations, the recognition, and the thank you to Officer Barone, and also to all the police, fire, and EMS from last night's event. It was a well-combined effort, and we really appreciate all you do. Thank you.
Alderman Johnson?
I agree with my colleagues, and I hope that the NICSOL cards can kind of, we've discovered it's a best-kept secret, and I think if we get more participation, the world would be a better place. And I'll be in good company, I also will be joining the virtual career night, but not as a police law officer, as a veterinarian. Thank you.
Graham Cassoon?
Good evening. I just want to say thanks to the fire department for another great job in keeping our community safe in a very serious and scary fire. My congratulations to Lieutenant Cologne, Sergeant Regina, and Detective Rosen tonight, and a big thank you to Officer Barone for his bravery and quick thinking and his outstanding police work. I think it's just an example of why we have such an exemplary police department here that serves our community. We're very lucky to have all of our officers on the department. Just for a little bit of business for the Third Ward, next week, Tuesday, the 25th, will be our Third Ward meeting for the month of May, and we will be at 6:00 PM at Maple Hill Park, so look for us there, we like to bring refreshments, it's always a good time. That's all I have.
Alderman Kleiner?
Thank you. Quite a night here, and also want to thank the police department and congratulate the people, the officers on their promotions, well deserved. You know, we've worked with them for a long time, and we have a great department, and Officer Barone, it's nice to see him up and doing well. What can you say except thank you? And also, to the fire department last night, did not hear the alarm go in, and saw the news today, and I went, wow, so what a great job, and this is why Lo Sap is just a no-brainer, whatever we can do for our volunteers, yeah, move it forward, and I hope everyone will support it when it's on the ballot. Also want to thank John Numchuck for doing some work on our minutes, which, council minutes, which needed a little, needed a little help this time, thank you, John. We'll be voting on the Ruthie Dino run tonight, and I will vote for it in closing the streets. I want to thank the chief for his work with the YMCA in trying to minimize it as much as possible as far as closing in the Second Ward. They will be going the opposite direction and stopping on Walk Hill instead of Cantrell, and they will open up as quickly as they can, so it's a good cause, let's just bear with it for the short time. Before our next meeting, our next meeting is the day after Memorial Day, so I want to remind people, May 31st is Memorial Day. There will not be a parade this year. The Middletown American Legion will have a very short service at 11:00 AM, a very small service, and the Town of Walk Hill in the Walk Hill Memorial Park, Veterans Memorial Park next to Matty's Diner at 10:00 AM is also gonna have a small service, so keep that in mind, remembering all our veterans, and thank you. Alderman Massey is our veteran on the council, and I thank you, and we'll see you next time. Thank you.
Alderman Burr?
I'd just like to congratulate our officers on all their promotions, and a great honor for Officer Barone, he's well deserved of it. That's all I have this evening, thank you.
New business?
We have a resolution sponsored by Alderman Massey to approve to expand the Lo Sap benefit from $700 to $1,200 annually, and authorize the city clerk to place this expansion on the ballot for a vote in November 2021.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Massey, seconded by Alderman Tobin. Any discussion? Alderman Green?
Thank you. Just want to note that as a volunteer, I will be abstaining from this. Thank you.
Anyone else? Rope?
Graham Cassoon?
Aye.
Tobin?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Tobin to ratify the contract between the Middletown Professional Firefighters, Inc., and the city of Middletown dated January 1st, 2021 to December 31st, 2023.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Tobin, seconded by Alderman Kleiner. Any discussion? Rope?
Graham Cassoon?
Aye.
Tobin?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Johnson to close any and all streets and intersections necessary for the YMCA annual Ruthie Dino Marshall Run on Sunday, June 13th, 2021, beginning at 8:00 AM.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Johnson, seconded by Alderman Kleiner. Any discussion? Rope?
Graham Cassoon?
Aye.
Tobin?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Johnson to authorize the mayor to sign as the sole signatory all necessary documents requiring pertaining to DANSI grants for the Davich Park expansion project.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Cassoon, seconded by Alderman Tobin. Any discussion? Rope?
Graham Cassoon?
Aye.
Tobin?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Kleiner to approve the new sanitation plan for the city of Middletown.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Kleiner, seconded by Alderman Green. Any discussion? Rope?
Graham Cassoon?
Aye.
Tobin?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Kleiner to approve the new sanitation plan for the city of Middletown.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Kleiner, seconded by Alderman Green. Any discussion? Rope?
Graham Cassoon?
Aye.
Tobin?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Massey to approve an agreement between the city and its bond council, O'Rourke, to cover the proposed sale of bonds to EFC.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Massey, seconded by Alderman Tobin. Any discussion? Rope?
Graham Cassoon?
Aye.
Tobin?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Tobin to close Union Street for the farmer's market every Saturday from 7:00 AM to 2:00 PM from June 5th, 2021, to August 5th, 2021, temporarily once areaway park is completed.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Tobin, seconded by Alderman Green. Any discussion? Rope?
Graham Cassoon?
Aye.
Tobin?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Green to award the bids for surplus vehicles auctions off through Auctions International for a total of $11,020.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Green, seconded by Alderman Burr. Any discussion? Rope? Rope?
Graham Cassoon?
Aye.
Tobin?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Johnson to authorize the mayor to sign an agreement from Fusco Engineering to provide professional services for a two-lot subdivision at 28 to 30 Pilgrim's Corner Road in the Town of Walk Hill.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Johnson, seconded by Alderman Kleiner. Any discussion?[1727.83]